I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Boulder Valley Board of Education for Tuesday, February 14th, 2023. Board members may attend and participate by electronic means in regular or special meetings of the board in accordance with policy BEAA and state law. Board members who attend and participate by electronic means shall identify the location from which they are participating and those present. Laura, would you please call the rule?
Garcia.
Here.
Get Part.
Here.
Niznik.
Here.
Raj Paul.
Here.
Sargent.
Here.
Sweeney Moran.
Here.
Zess.
Here.
Thank you.
We'll begin as we do often with our student moment. I'll turn it over to you, Rob, and then we'll do the land acknowledgement. Or do you want me to do the land acknowledgement first? Okay. We'll begin with our land acknowledgement. Richard, could you please read our land acknowledgement?
Thank you. Boulder Valley School District resides and operates on land that is ancestral homeland and unjustly and illegally taken territory of the Ute, Puebloan, Arapaho, Cheyenne, Apache, Navajo, and 48 other tribal nations historically tied to this land who have called this land home since time immemorial. We acknowledge the atrocities committed here, including the painful history of genocide, forced assimilation, and efforts to alienate the indigenous inhabitants from their homeland, supported by the policies of the United States government. BVSD is aware of the many indigenous peoples, past and present, and their dignified nations and cultures who care for the land with strength and resilience. BVSD recognizes the histories of the land in Colorado and the survival of the many nations that carry their oral traditions into the present. It is BVSD's responsibility to educate ourselves, our communities, and our students so that we can embrace the wisdom and knowledge of indigenous peoples and actively stand together to address injustices. In offering this land acknowledgement, we affirm and honor the history, wisdom, oral traditions, and resilience of indigenous peoples and recognize the responsibility to care for and appreciate this land together.
Thank you, Richard. I'd like to remind everybody that the mission of the Boulder Valley School District is to create challenging, meaningful, and engaging learning opportunities so that all children thrive and are prepared for successful civically engaged lives. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for joining us electronically on BV22. We're glad to have you observe and participate in our meetings. At this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Moved by Kitty, seconded by Beth. Laura, could you call the motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Garcia.
Yes.
Get Part.
Yes.
Niznik.
Yes.
Raj Paul.
Yes.
Sargent.
Yes.
Sweeney Moran.
Yes.
Zess.
Yes.
Motion passes.
We'll begin as always with the superintendent's report. Dr. Anderson, good evening, and I think you'll help us with the student moment, too. So, thank you.
Thank you, Board President Get Part, members of the board. Happy Valentine's Day, everyone. Thank you for everybody who was able to join us in person and online. We have a couple of items I'd love to update the board and our community on, and then on to the student moment. And so, the first item I'd love to discuss was our very successful Teacher of Color Hiring Fair that we held this past weekend. This weekend, we had just a lot of really great licensed candidates come out for our third annual Teacher of Color and Diverse Educator Hiring Event. We welcomed everyone encouraged while working to encourage diversity and knowing that the benefit for our students when the staff in our schools reflect the community that we have the honor to serve. I want to thank our school leaders that came out to conduct interviews. We had over 45 school leaders from across BVSD. Love to thank Dr. Hill and his team for organizing the amazing event. We were able to interview over 100 candidates on Saturday. And so, I really am proud that this is the third of these events that we've had and the third of many to come, and it has become just a normal way of doing business for us here in BVSD. So, I want to thank all those that came out and interviewed, those that were doing the interviewing, and look forward to hiring season, making sure that those folks that had an opportunity to interview to get placed and to begin serving our students here in BVSD. So, thanks to everybody who's involved with that. Earlier this week, board members in partnership with PEN, the Parent Engagement Network, BVSD began to advertise and launch our first-ever Community Leadership Academy. Now, this is an idea of board members that those that have been on the board for a while, I know that we've talked about for a while. How do we begin to really engage those that are interested in our community at deeper levels so we can deepen their understanding of the school district, how it operates, and the great work we're doing here in BVSD? And our hope is that through the Community Leadership Academy, we'll be able to provide the information needed for parents to play a more active role in their child's education and the district as a whole. And it doesn't matter where parents or community members are starting. They may just be contemplating to volunteer at their school through the PTA or the District Accountability Committee, or maybe thinking about bigger leadership roles, even potentially running for Board of Education. We feel like that by establishing the BVSD Community Leadership Academy, this is a great place for folks who want to get engaged in our school district to start. And so, we've put out our application for those that are interested. I know that we sent out an email to our parents and community. We also have a spot on our website that's now available, which is bvsd.org/community-leadership-academy. There's information on the website as well as applications. The deadline to apply is February 24th, and we'll be meeting for four on four Fridays between now and May with the idea that we're going to not only engage this group on the operations and academics work that's happening in the district, but also in community issues through our partnership with PEN. And so, we're very excited to be launching the Community Leadership Academy. And finally, board members, it is time for tonight's student moment. So, board members, as you may remember, a few weeks ago, we celebrated Centaurus High School's Physics Club. If you'll remember, these are the students that beat the professionals in an engineering challenge hosted by NASA's Jet Propulsion Laboratory in Southern California. Yes, that's right. This is a busy and incredibly smart group that's also currently working to create a science experiment for a space plane payload focused on climate change research. Very exciting work. Really, I think one of the things that's most impressive is that the efforts are student-led, of course, with the support of their advisors, Kimberly Becker and Lauren Scarborough, who I believe are here. And so, I appreciate all that you all have done to support our students and would love to welcome the Centaurus Physics Club to speak about your club and your efforts and how you beat all those adults. We would love to hear about that.
Thank you. We are Centaurus Physics Club. I am Annabella. I'm one of the co-presidents of the club.
I'm Hannah, and I'm also one of the co-presidents of the club.
And I'm Marcos. I'm a junior at Centaurus.
Yeah, we can, we'll step up a little. Okay. So, before kind of who we are and what we've done, we wanted to briefly introduce what this club is. We already had a lovely introduction in the beginning. So, from these images, you can tell that we have a pretty big decent-sized club. Our club really blossomed in size after some recruitment efforts on our part on, like Annabella and I, for the last few years have been working to recruit a lot of underclassmen and also women to the club. And ever since we kind of started coming back to normal after the pandemic, our club has really grown in size, and we've gotten to do a lot of new and interesting activities with all of our new members. Yeah, so the pictures, some of the pictures on the screen, the one to the far left is a donation from the Denver Broncos, which is pretty cool. And so, that was our club get-together. That was last year, I think. And then, in the top right is a potluck that we had. We try to do like a potluck in the summer every year to just sort of like introduce any new members and just reconnect before the school year starts. And then, the bottom left is a Menchies fundraiser. Menchies is like a frozen yogurt place, Dear Centaurus. And so, we posted a fundraiser there, and we brought in around $200 from that one. So, it was pretty successful. Yeah.
Okay. So, in Physics Club, we have a couple of projects that we're working on, and one of the main projects that we have been working on and has been getting a little bit of attention lately is the Dawn Aerospace Spaceplane Project. So, when I was a freshman about four years ago, our club approached Ms. Becker, and we had found this competition, and we were interested in applying for it. And basically, it is a competition based out of New Zealand, and we ended up winning a payload spot on it. And what we have been working on since then is building a device to collect air samples from the mesosphere, which is about 60 kilometers up in the upper atmosphere over New Zealand. And we are looking at collecting certain gases that are specifically for looking at the turnover, the rate of turnover of gases in the mesosphere, and that has a lot of implications for climate research, which is really important and a growing field right now. And in our club for this specific project, we kind of have two main teams of student-led groups. We have the engineering team and the computer science team, and we both work together. The engineering team mainly is comprised of students who are very interested in CAD modeling and building things, and we are working to figure out how we're going to put all of the various parts of our plane together to collect the air samples. And then, the other team, the computer science team, are looking at how, once we have our sample and once we have our data, how we're going to be able to analyze that and be able to use that for future research.
Our other main sort of activity this past semester has been the JPL Invention Challenge. This is a group of about eight kids, and we went to Pasadena, California to participate with the Jet Propulsion Laboratory. We were part of the professional division because we are an out-of-state high school. So, they have a high school division there as well, but it's only California high schools. So, we were able to participate with the professionals, and it was overall a very educational experience, both like getting to work alongside these other adult teams that were obviously much more organized than us, mainly because we built that little contraption, which we call the Taste of Victory. We built it like in the hotel room the day before the competition. So, it was vastly unorganized, but it was very interesting to see just the difference and the different approaches that people had to solving this one problem, which was to get a little ball through or several balls through a series of little rackets, sort of like croquet. And I don't know, it was just like a very educational experience. It was fun to have that moment of competition because we had about a minute to shoot all the balls, and so it was a very intense minute, but it definitely paid off. And we won the professional division. We also won the Most Creative Design Award, mainly because nobody, the competition was not very stiff for that one. A bunch of engineers is not necessarily the most artistic type of design, but our Taste of Victory was very successful in that.
So, this is another project, but this is one that we've started this semester instead of last semester. And like the space plane project, this project has been completely student-initiated. And this project is essentially, it's a competition, and schools from all around the country will submit proposed experiments to test at the particle accelerators in Germany and Switzerland. And so, to prepare for this, to prepare for this competition, we have all been learning basic particle physics. And as a new student on the physics team, it's been a great experience because I've been able to see just how welcoming everyone else on the, everyone else in the club is. For example, so usually, we would be taught particle science by Ms. Becker, but she can't make it every meeting. So, some of the seniors, such as Reese, took the initiative to teach the particle physics themselves, and everyone in the group was really supporting, and overall, it was a great experience.
All right. Thank you so much for your time.
Thanks so much for joining us tonight, and that is all I have for superintendent comments. I'll answer, ready to answer any questions.
So, Richard, go ahead.
Yeah, that was a great presentation. Wow, you guys are amazing. Whoa. I just have a couple of questions, but it's for our great leader here regarding competitions and all of that stuff that you all do. What kind of district support do we provide them? Because I saw that they were doing all of these different fundraisers and stuff like that. Are we providing district support to these teams?
So, typically, the support for the different types of competitions, academic competitions, would come from the school, and they would use dollars that we allocate from the school. Sometimes, as clubs, organizations fundraise, sometimes the school's able to provide funds. It just kind of depends on the activity.
Well, come knock on my door. I'll provide a gift for you guys. My other question is on the PEN, Parent Engagement Network, the leadership that you're going to start. I went in there, and I don't know whether, is that, is that information also in Spanish? Is that registration in Spanish?
I believe so. I'll have to check with our team and make sure that that's available in English and in Spanish. That was certainly the intent.
That's great. That's great news. Now, the other one is, we do have some organizations that provide that training already and have been doing it for a number of years for the Latino community on how they can be best involved with the school district, et cetera. One that comes to mind is the one that we all know pretty well is parity. I think that's what they're designed to do, if I'm not mistaken, is to teach Latino parents on how the school works. Okay. Is there going to be any connection between all of these different groups and PEN?
That's a great question, Richard, and I think that over time, that's certainly the hope, is that we would be able to connect all of organizations that really want to inform our community so they can engage in decisions for their kids and also the decisions that we make as a governance team and the district as a whole. I would say that the sessions that we're going to be running this spring is the inaugural cohort of individuals, and we hope to get a very diverse group of individuals within this first cohort. And I would say, over time, as we refine and improve the Community Leadership Academy, that there would be tie-ins to other existing groups to really create a network for individuals who want to get involved and learn more about our school district. But I think that, you know, you bring up a great point, and I think there's tons of opportunity for collaboration there.
Thanks, Kathy. Well, first, I want to say to the Centaurus group, amazing work you're doing and such a great representation of what students in BVSD can accomplish and what our education provides. And so, thank you for taking that extracurricular on and making BVSD proud. Question about the Leadership Academy. As a former SAC chair, DAC chair, the hardest position, a membership role for us to find was always the community member, and that's required by state. Are you, in this Leadership Academy, reaching out to community members who are not parents? Because that's the requirement for those membership positions that are so hard to find. As a community member, not a parent, not a teacher, and how are you reaching out to those communities for the Leadership Academy?
Great question, yes. This is open to parents and community members, right? This is really an opportunity for to engage the community at large, certainly pushing that through our information networks, and we'll be reaching out to some of our partners within the business community and other organizations. Hopefully, the word gets out. We pushed this out Monday. I think we already have 30-something applications. I do think that folks are going to be really excited to learn more about this, and our hope is to get really just a wide, a wide range of individuals in our community engaged in real productive ways, to learn about the district and for us to learn from them as well. I think it's going to be really, really powerful.
Great, thanks.
Kitty.
I don't have any questions for Rob, but I just want to talk to the students. Thank you so much. You can just tell by looking at your faces how much you enjoyed doing this, and it's so great that our students have an opportunity to not only learn in the classroom, but to actually put it into practice, and you learn so much better when you can actually do it. And so, I know you all have to be proud of yourselves, and I'm proud of you, too.
Lisa.
Well, I guess hoping that more praise is welcome rather than repetitive. Really cool stuff, Centaurus Physics Club. I think the stuff you're doing is great, and the enthusiasm you have for it is even better. This was, I think, maybe my favorite student presentation of the year. Thanks so much for telling me what you've been up to.
It was my favorite, too.
All right, and Beth.
My goodness. Like Lisa said, I hope that more praise is welcome. Guys, incredible. I enjoyed hearing about it a few weeks back, and I know your teacher as well, so I've been hearing about it before this, and I, really incredible work, guys, just so inspired. Thanks for sharing with us tonight.
And I'll add to the praise, and I also have to say, it just warmed my heart to look at the smile on the teachers' faces as their students were presenting. You could just tell they were supportive and proud and all of the right emotions from what I could see from back here. So, thank you for leading these amazing students and for your support, and, you know, I'll echo what Richard said, whatever we can do to be supportive, you should just let us know. But great job, and keep up the good work. When do you think you'll find out about the CERN project? Is there a deadline for that?
Yeah, so we're submitting April 12th. April 12th is when we submit. And then, but it usually takes a little while to get out.
So, April 12th, you'll have, so you guys have a deadline coming up pretty quickly. Learning particle physics on your own is pretty impressive, I have to say. So, give up the good work and thanks so much. And then, Rob, as you know, I'm super excited about the Community Leadership Academy, and to hear we already have 30 applications is pretty exciting. And I just, my understanding is this is like, we're launching it, and we'll see where it goes and where the community takes us because we're hoping that it gets legs on its own from being driven by the community and collaboration with other groups. So, thanks for taking this on, and thanks to PEN for helping coordinate this. Is that an accurate description?
Absolutely. I do think that, you know, we know that there's just an opportunity here to engage our community at deeper levels and then create this network of folks already engaged with our community so that more folks, you know, in Boulder Valley, in our school district, within the community at large, parents know and understand the things that we're doing, are better informed, and can help us as we shape future vision and think about, you know, where we need to go next as we think about the end of our potential strategic plan within the next couple of years and is, you know, do we stay on track? Do we need to make some adjustments? It's going to be really important for our community to engage with us, and so it's exciting to have our first cohort launching here within the next month.
And to your point, Nicole, I think it's great if we can get the other two-thirds of our community that don't have kids in the school to somehow understand what we're doing and to engage. I just think that's really key. And with our upcoming CTE conversations and trying to get community feedback on what kinds of CTE opportunities make sense for the community, I just think it's, there's lots of opportunities down the road, so thanks for taking that on. Board members, anything else? So, thank you, Centaurus. Keep up the good work. We look forward to hearing some more first-place stories. No pressure. Any kind of success stories are awesome to hear, so thank you for coming and sharing with us.
Thank you for coming.
Laura, my script says we have DAC next, but I think you just forgot to take that off. Just want to make sure. All right. We will now begin the public participation section of the board meeting. Members of the public who wish to speak at tonight's meeting are asked to sign up prior to noon today by submitting their request to speak during public participation form that can be found on the BVSD website or by contacting the board secretary Laura Schaefer. Public participants have the option to attend the meeting in person or join and present their comments via Google Meet. The board respects the rights of the public to speak on matters concerning the operation of the schools. The board does not endorse the comments of any speaker and reminds all who speak that they are responsible for their own speech. Please know this is a listening opportunity for the board, and the board does not engage in a dialogue or answer questions as part of public participation. The board needs time to consider the comments made and may include items on future board meeting agendas to address issues raised by our public and community. To ensure that our meeting is conducted in an orderly manner, we ask that persons who address the board, one, can find your comments to matters that are germane to the business of the school district; two, recognize that students often attend or view our meetings. Speakers' remarks, therefore, should be suitable for an audience that includes kindergarten through 12th grade students. I may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement that is unrelated to the business of the district or inappropriate for K-12 students. Please limit your presentation to two minutes. If you run out of time or you would like to share additional information, you may email the board. You will see a yellow card when you have 30 seconds remaining. When you have 10 seconds, you will see an orange card. Please wrap up your comments. At the end of your two minutes, a timer will sound, and your microphone will be muted. We have several speakers tonight on non-agenda items. The first speaker, let me see if I can get this right, is Florence Royale. I have an IRV, so I don't know if...
I don't know if Florence is here. Let me see if she joined online. She's not there. She's not there.
So, we'll come back and see if Florence joins when we're done. If she comes on at any time, just let us know. All right. The next speaker we have is Ayla Ruggles, who was given two minutes from Lily Rukowski.
We couldn't find one. Are you worried?
Technical difficulties, it'll be just a second. Thanks, Amala.
Hi, my name is Ayla Ruggles.
My name is Lily Rukowski, and we're second graders from Eisenhower Elementary. We are here to let you know that lunch has been too short. Kids need more time to eat. It's harder for us to do our work because we don't have enough energy. Not enough time to eat makes us feel really stressed out, and we don't finish the food our parents give us or Annie gives us at school.
This is not fair to teachers either because the kids will not, will have more trouble learning with empty stomachs and maybe act worse in class if they're still hungry.
Often, we only get to eat one piece of food, like a granola bar or a slice of bread. That's not enough for our brains.
It also takes a very long time to go for the lunch line.
We are asking for a longer lunch.
It's the right thing for kids and the right thing for teachers.
Thank you for listening to us.
We hope you can help us get another five or 10 minutes of lunch.
Thank you. You did that really fast. Are you sure you don't have more things to say? Okay. We're good. So, next, we have Laura Collins, and again, I have either in-person or virtual. Do we...
She is not making, she won't make it for this meeting.
Okay. William Quinby, who's been given two minutes by Jill Powers.
I believe he was going to be in-person, and I do not see, is William in here? No. I don't see him online either.
Again, if anybody shows up online, just give me a heads up, and we'll figure how to weave it into the agenda. And then, Cynthia Nevison. Virtual is what I have. There we go. Okay. We can't hear you, Cynthia. Try again. Let me see if we can hear you. Hello? Nope. Hold on.
Cynthia, can you hear us?
Yes, she says she can hear us. Hold on, we're trying to figure out the technical difficulties. Thanks for your patience.
Do you have anyone else who might want to speak so we can figure out where the issue is?
Mm-mm.
No, we have a staff member on there that can say hello or something.
I think Amala's trying to get it figured out. I think Amala's trying to get it figured out.
We're going to try testing with someone else. Bob Wark, can you hear us? Clarissa, can you hear us? We cannot hear you, Clarissa. Bob, we cannot hear you either if you're speaking.
Yeah, I think the meet's working. It's...
Okay, I think we have it. Cynthia, did you want to try saying test, test?
Yeah, testing, hello?
Great. I can hear you. Yay. All right. Thanks for your patience.
Oh, yeah. No worries. Okay, shall I start then?
Yes, please. That'd be great.
Okay, yes. So declining enrollment at the kindergarten first-grade level was discussed at the January BVSD meeting. The Denver Post recently reported a statewide decline in public school enrollment, including a 4% drop in kindergarten. Nationwide, well over a million students left public schools in the last two years. A big reason, according to a recent Wall Street Journal article, is that parents aren't happy with how public schools handled COVID. Let's recall in BVSD, older students spent a full year until March 2021, either locked out of school altogether or only allowed back two days per week. Students spent another nearly full year until February 2022 in mandatory face masks, even in many cases during outdoor recess. I routinely saw little kids masked outdoors at my neighborhood school. There is no evidence that even indoor masks reduced COVID in schools in the largest U.S. study by Chandra and Hoegh or in the Denmark 19 randomized control study. Meanwhile, depression and anxiety among youth doubled during the early months of the pandemic. Suicide attempts by adolescent girls increased 50% in early 2021 versus 2019. Reading and math skills were set back 20 years, according to the New York Times, with biggest losses among low-income students. I appreciate that BVSD was balancing different perspectives and tried to act in the community's best interest. However, an acknowledgement that many COVID-era policies in retrospect were unnecessary and ultimately harmful, and, most importantly, must never be repeated, might help restore trust and encourage parents to return their children to public schools. A good starting point would be to replace the picture of six somber masked children from the BVSD website with some happy, smiling faces. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thanks again for your patience and for your comments. Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
And I think we now, are you William Quinby? Okay, great. Come on up.
Question for Laura Schaefer. I asked a friend to give me two minutes. I don't know if I have two or four minutes.
I think you have four minutes is what mine says, Mr. Quinby, that you were given two minutes by Jill Powers.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Well, thank you for the opportunity to be here. I observed the board meeting last month and was very impressed with the strategic leadership of this group. I mean that in all sincerity. I have some experience in schools. I was a teacher, principal, school association director for over 40 years. And I'm here to support Ross Wenner's proposal for creating advisory programs in middle and high schools in the school district. I understand two schools, Centaurus and NuVista, have strong advisory programs, and I've seen what a difference they can make in supporting the social-emotional growth of students. And I think all students benefit from them. Ross's petition has almost 200 signatures. It's not impressive. I don't think schools change because of petitions, but I celebrate his effort to call attention to a missed opportunity in the school district, one that actually could address some of the concerns raised by the previous speaker. I know the district's strategic plan places high importance on social-emotional growth and inclusion, and I think advisory programs that I've seen in schools and helped create can make a huge difference in that regard. One particular aspect of this, I think merits special attention, and that's also related to the previous speaker's talk. Today's young people, ages nine to 22, are distressed to a degree we've never seen in any previous generation. I have a friend, PhD psychologist, who's doing research on this. She is a visiting scholar at Penn this semester back in Philadelphia, and her recent white paper on the subjects lists stressors. And I think it's worth keeping these in mind because this is what makes school harder for young people today than ever before. Social media, climate change anxiety, mass shootings, increased frequency of sexual harassment and assaults, and the polarization of societal, polarization of society. These are all new phenomenon that add stress to students' lives. And I think I forgot to mention, my daughter went to Boulder High, graduated in 2014. She got a great education, had a very positive experience. But she also experienced a lot of the high pressure on college-bound students. That's another stressor in the lives of many of the students in our high schools. And advisory programs, from what I've seen, help a great deal in creating a supportive peer group with a trusted advisor the students can go to when school is tough, when it's not working for them. And having that safe place, that kind of support, helps them succeed academically, brings out the best in them, helps them rise to the challenges of the great school district that we have. And I think all students would benefit from that. One key element that I've noticed in many schools that is revealed through climate surveys is when asked, "Do you have at least one person in the school that you trust to go to?" One trusted adult relationship. It doesn't seem like it's asking a lot. But there's a striking difference between schools, if you look at, you know, from school to school around the country. Schools with low numbers in terms of, does every student have a trusted adult relationship at school? Just one. The schools that score low have lots of other challenges that indicate poor social-emotional support for students. So I encourage the district to pay attention to your own climate surveys. I haven't seen the results. I'm sure that data point is in there. And I want to end by telling you about a conversation I had last night, if I have time. I haven't been tracking it. Do I have a minute or so?
Can you share that story with us on email? Because the timer said that you're out of time. Is that all right?
Okay.
And I would encourage you to share that because those kinds of stories are usually really helpful.
I will. And it really, I talked last night with the mother of a Boulder High student who ended his life through suicide last fall, and there were two others at Boulder High. That's another key element. Let me just finish, if I can get your indulgence, by listing the benefits of advisory programs.
Mr. Quinby, can you just, like, send those to us in an email? That would be really helpful.
To Laura Schaefer?
Yeah, and she'll send it with, she'll share it with the...
I will do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. So Laura, no one else has showed up?
I don't see that anyone else has shown up on the Google Meet. And it would have only been Florence that would have shown up, and I thought she was going to be in-person, so.
Okay. Just wanted to double-check before we closed it out. All right. This concludes our public participation. We appreciate hearing from the speakers tonight and for the patience for the virtual speakers. We'll now move on to our next agenda item, which is board communication. Board members who would like to begin? Beth?
Well, I want to start off by thanking tonight's speakers, everyone that was here in-person and online. It was great to hear from you all. We really appreciate it. We will be discussing school lunches in April. I also wanted to comment on Rob's new Community Leadership Academy. I think this is a really great opportunity. Anyone that's listening or considering getting involved, this is a great chance to be involved in your students' education, even if you don't have a student, to Nicole's point. So we really hope you'll join us. There's a real synergy when you get the opportunity to be with other leaders and be really engaged. It's very exciting. So. And then also, kind of on that note, related, I wasn't able to join, but we did have a couple prospective Board of Education candidate forums. And so I would encourage you, if you're in any way thinking about maybe running for office, that you come out, come talk to us. I'd probably speak for everyone on the board. If you want to reach out, grab a cup of coffee. We're happy to do it anytime, any questions you might have. It's a really neat opportunity to be part of your community and be in a role that's really impactful. So join us. Think about it. That's it for me tonight.
Excuse me. Board member, Board President Gephardt, it looks like Florence Royale just joined.
Great. Let's Beamer in.
Florence, when you're ready to talk to the microphone, you can go ahead and present.
We're ready.
I would like to say that my school and everyone there may not be getting enough energy at lunch.
You can keep going. I think there's some technical difficulties.
We're listening. You can keep going.
To do the best work. I think if you agree with me... What? I don't know what's happening. Okay. I think everyone may not be getting enough energy at lunch to do the best work. I don't get it.
So there's some playback issues on this end. So Florence is going to just give her spiel, and then it might have some strange sound. So she's just going to say her spiel.
We can hear you fine if that helps.
I think that everybody may not be getting enough energy at lunch to do the best work. If you agree with me, please help by making your lunch five minutes longer. That would mean our school ends at 3:20. So I think we can keep going with this because you're my friend. I hope you... I think that we should continue for lunch to be longer with five more minutes. I think that will really help and impact a lot of our students. I hear that people in the school board meeting have been talking about this for a while. The children have really been working on lunch.
Was that it? Or should, was there more?
Um, I think there's a little more.
Okay, keep going.
Me and my friend, Ray Paulets, have been working on this activity for kind of a while, and we're really happy that you wrote back. So I think we could continue on the lunch by working on the weather. Today at school, we just want to get in the air and see what's going. I am really thankful that you wrote back, and I'm really appreciative of all that you have done for our elementary and all my classes and schools. Thank you.
Great job. Is that anything more? Awesome job, Florence. Thank you. I hope you can see you got a lot of thumbs up from the board. Thank you. Okay, so now that concludes our public participation. All right, so next board comment. Richard, anything?
I do have a couple of comments I'd like to make. I do want to thank the speakers that were here. Thank you so much for your wonderful presentation and for the young lady that was on, or the young child that was on the TV. She also did a great job. And like Director Beth said, that we will be talking about that in April. So keep tuned, okay? Couple of things that I'd like to say is that, yeah, I did attend the Thursday, I think it was Thursday, right? The school, the information meeting? Yeah. Two of them. And people are interested. I hope that they continue with that interest. And I do have a follow-up copy with one of them that called me. So that's encouraging from District G. So I want to thank Kathy for setting that up. Thank you so much. I think it's good information for potential school board members. The other thing that I'd like to bring up is my concern around hiring more bilingual certified staff, classified staff, as well as principals in our district, especially if we have principals that will be hired and will be in our schools that are highly impacted by emerging bilinguals, especially those that have Spanish and monolinguals and Spanish-dominated parents at home, that we do all we can to make sure that the leadership of those particular schools are able to communicate with their parents. And if that leadership is not able to communicate, at least we should start thinking about other efforts that we can provide to those impacted schools by making sure that there's at least one person in leadership positions that do come in contact with our Latino parents or any other parent that needs some language assistance. It's always great to have a leader in that position that a parent can go to and speak comfortably in their own language so that they can get their points across and get their answers to whatever questions they have. I am very, very pleased to see that we had 100, we said 100, right, people that came to the people of color hiring. And I'm real curious to find out, once you all get the information together, to see how many we have actually that are interested. And we'll be granted maybe some interviews, et cetera. But I'm more interested to see if we have any of those particular candidates that are bilingual because I think it's essential that we start looking very seriously at our, and I know we are, okay? I know we are doing that because we have made some gains from the past. But I'm hoping that we can continue making those gains and really start hiring bilinguals in our, in our system. I get reminded constantly that we have a heavy impact of immigrant students from other countries, Latin American countries, that their parents are Spanish or monolinguals or Spanish-dominated. And some of these particular students are also Spanish-dominated or Spanish-monolinguals. And if we look at some of the statistics, it's, many of those students are not doing well in our schools. So I'm hoping that we continue that effort, so that we hire the best bilinguals. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Richard. Stacy? Nothing. Lisa? Nothing, Kitty? Nicole?
Thanks, Kathy. I want to echo Richard's gratitude for setting up these board candidate information sessions. I was pleased by the number and quality of the candidates that are showing up, and I do have a few coffees scheduled. So I think that shows some genuine interest, or at least I hope it does. So extending that opportunity, if anybody wants, is interested, wants to have coffee, talk about this role and the great work that we do. I'd be more than happy to do that.
and the great work that we do, I'd be more than happy to do that. Today, I had the opportunity of popping down to our library, which I didn't know we had, and looking at both the literacy curriculum and the math curriculum that are up for adoption. And I just want to encourage the public and our board members to go check those out. I was really impressed, impressed that both of those curriculum come in English and in Spanish. The math has books and workbooks and, you know, things that kids can write on. I thought that was really great. Lots of, I think they're really, the finalists are of excellent quality. And I just encourage you guys to go check those out and ahead of us approving those on our budget. That's all.
And I want to thank Laura Schaefer for all the work she's done in helping us coordinate the candidate forums, coordinating lunch, coordinating schedules. Never an easy thing. We will have a couple more in March. We'll get those, those dates out there right away. At least two more. And at the risk of sounding repetitive, which we're doing a good job of tonight, we are all available to talk to anybody who wants to think about running for board, or even in an email I got today with someone who said, "I'm not running for board, but it encouraged me to get engaged in my community." So I thought that was really pretty awesome. So we have a wonderful community. We have a wonderful board. We have a wonderful superintendent, wonderful staff. So people who are thinking about stepping up, you know, I encourage you to do that and at least have a conversation before you decide you don't want to do it, because it's a, it's a great opportunity and some of the most fulfilling work you'll probably ever do, at least in my humble opinion. So thank you again, Laura, for all your hard work in doing that, because we couldn't have done it without you, for sure. And then just really quickly, I just wanted to say that through the Colorado Association of School Boards and NSBA, we were able to have a trip to DC with a bunch of school board members from around the state, met with almost all our delegation. You can probably guess which one of the members of our delegation did not respond to our request to meet from the Western Slope. But some of the newer members of our delegation were very engaged, very happy to meet with us. Senator Bennett met with us. And so I, the reason I bring it up is I just think that sometimes we forget that we can connect with our federal legislators. And there's some really important topics coming up, including more funding for IDEA and some other issues that they'll be dealing with. And so I just encourage us all, when we have that opportunity, to continue to connect with our legislators, both state and federal. So I think now we will move on to our information items. We have two this evening. The first is an update on universal preschool. I think, Robin, you're leading it with Kim. And you'll introduce everyone? And I have to say ahead of time, I'm sure this has been one of the more challenging things you've all, have all had to do. So thank you in advance for all of your hard work. There was just a newspaper article about how they had to restart all the applications. So Rob, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Board President Gebhardt, members of the board. We're excited to be able to present an update on universal preschool this evening to the board and the public. With us this evening are two of our executive directors that have been working hand in hand to make our model work. Our Executive Director of Early Childhood, Kim Bloman, our Executive Director of Community Schools, Renee Williams, also with our Assistant Superintendent of Schools, Robin Fernandez. This, this implementation has been a challenge, to put it lightly. I think that our team has done an admirable job meeting the challenges and ever-changing information. And I was sharing with some folks the other day, you know, anytime you go really fast, which I would consider this implementation has gone very fast, from law to action in a, in a course of a year, it's going to create challenges. There's, there's, there is a cost to pay when you go extremely fast. And so to the extent that our team has had to adjust and course correct and build models and then build different models, think about the funding and to the extent that they're going to get into some of the challenges, I don't know what this, this presentation is to really to highlight the challenges, but more on how we're reacting to the current environment. Just, I would just want to, again, communicate to our community that we're here for you. As, as there's bumps in the roads, things will, things will eventually get smoothed out. And I'm very excited about our updated program that we'll be able to present tonight and all the work that we're doing. And so with that, I'll turn the presentation over to our Assistant Superintendent of Schools, Rob Fernandez.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Good evening, President Gebhardt, members of the board, and Dr. Anderson. As Dr. Anderson said, we are very excited to be here this evening to share information with you about how BVSD will be rolling out our new universal pre-K program. High-quality learning experiences for our youngest learners have long been the hallmark of our preschool program in BVSD, and we are looking forward to even more greatly enhanced experiences for both students and families beginning in August. And so to that end, I am joined this evening with our Executive Director of Early Childhood Education, Kimberly Bluman, and Renee Williams, who is our Executive Director of Community Schools. And at this point, I'm going to turn it over to them.
Thank you. Are you clicking or?
I'll click for it.
Perfect. All right. Good evening. It's wonderful to be back with you, talking about the new state of Colorado Universal Preschool Program. Last February, I can't believe it was last February I was here, I shared with you Governor Polis created a universal preschool commission to create recommendations for the implementation of the new universal preschool program as part of the Proposition EE ballot measure, which was passed by Colorado voters in November of 2020. This ballot measure offered 10 hours of free preschool a week for all four-year-olds. The recommendations brought forward and detailed in legislation signed by Governor Polis is now what we call House Bill 1295, Colorado Universal Preschool, or otherwise known as CUP. The new legislation passed was signed in April of 2023 by Governor Polis. House Bill 1295 created the following: A new Colorado Department of Early Childhood Education, which we're calling CDEC. So if you hear that term, you know it's our new early childhood department. The new department will have oversight of all birth-to-five quality programming in the state of Colorado. As part of the creation of the new early childhood department, all early childhood programs at the Colorado Department of Education and the Colorado Department of Health and Human Services will move to that new state department. So this is actually, the governor will actually have a cabinet-level position around early childhood education. The new legislation ends the 34-year-old program called Colorado Universal, or excuse me, Colorado Preschool Program, and blends the funding with the Proposition EE Universal Preschool Funds with special education funding for children with disabilities. In addition, the new legislation creates a new reporting structure, program guidelines, and new state of Colorado universal preschool application system called Bridge Care, which Kathy alluded to that is having to do a reset this week.
All right. So, House Bill 1295 presented an opportunity for the Early Childhood Education Department, led by Kim, and Community Schools, led by me, to come together to develop a model that effectively responded to the legislative change. ECE provides students with high-quality early learning, and Community Schools provide students with high-quality enrichment and childcare programs. Our two departments have worked together for more than a year to build the program that we will outline for you tonight. So, in developing BVSD's new preschool model, we had three principles that guided our work. The first principle was to build a program that prioritized the needs of students and their families. We know that working families need full-day preschool learning and enrichment options, so we increased the number of schools with full-day preschool from five to 15. We know proximity to home and work is important to families, so we designed a program that offered more neighborhood preschool options. Our goal is to attract more students into BVSD early, provide high-quality experience, and retain those same students into the elementary school years. The second principle that guided our work was to build a high-quality program that closes the achievement gap right from the start. Our preschool staff are highly qualified, with ECSE teachers and director-qualified preschool, childcare professionals, leading each classroom. The curriculum we use, which is called the Creative Curriculum, is state-approved and designed to support young learners. Our schedule allows staff time to collaborate, engage in professional learning, and builds programs that support the academic, social, and emotional growth of children. The third guiding principle was to develop a program that was financially and operationally viable. We built a program that is cost-effective without compromising quality. We took into account labor and staffing constraints across a variety of departments, and we selected program sites that did not require capital expenditures to open.
In BVSD, quality matters. The window from birth to age five is a critical moment in a child's development. Ninety percent of the brain is developed within those first five years. Research illustrates that children in kindergarten who attend high-quality preschool are, on average, eight months ahead in academic learning and about five months ahead in executive functioning skills, such as listening, planning, self-control, compared to those who do not. In BVSD, we provide the gold standard of preschool high-quality programming. And what that looks like is high-quality learning and enrichment standards. We do have prioritized standards in preschool, child-centered curriculum resources. As Renee alluded to, we have the High Quality Creative Curriculum Program, whole-child data conversations with families. We have a school readiness assessment and have frequent conversations with families throughout the year about their child's development and learning. And we have high-quality licensed teachers in learning and director-qualified staff in enrichment. So you'll see here, we have the Early Childhood Education and Community Schools leadership met over this last year with all of these different district teams in the development of the new BVSD learning and enrichment model. It really was a team effort. So you see all the way from human resources, facilities, our BVEA and BVPA leadership, enrollment, special education, legal, transportation, food services, and business services. It really was a team effort to get to where we are today. Now, we're going to talk about who's eligible and what the preschool programming actually looks like going into next year. So as I talked about, the governor, originally Proposition EE was 10 hours of free preschool a week. And the governor about, I would say, the week of Thanksgiving, moved it to 15 hours of universal free preschool. So in BVSD, all of our four-year-olds will receive 15 hours of free preschool from the state of Colorado. And because we have mixed-age classrooms with three-year-olds, the three-year-olds will also get 15 hours of programming. And then you'll also see that we also will have additional enrichment hours, which are available to both three- and four-year-olds. And we'll actually have that in 15 locations next year. So that's pretty exciting, because we only have them in five right now. So we're really expanding that offering so more families can have five-day-a-week programming.
Okay. So now, I will walk you through what a typical weekly schedule will look like from a family's perspective. So children are grouped into two cohorts, as you can see there. And there are two classrooms in most schools. One is for learning, represented by the red blocks in the slide, and one is for enrichment, represented by the blue blocks in the slide. If there's no enrichment program at the school, there'll be two learning classrooms. Children are grouped into two cohorts, and they move between learning and enrichment classrooms throughout the week. So a child in Cohort One will start the week with learning on Monday and have their next scheduled learning day on Thursday. If they're also enrolled in enrichment, they'll have enrichment on Tuesday and Friday. Wednesdays are there as an optional add-on day of enrichment, half-days, for working families. In both programs, staff are highly qualified. Early Childhood Education and Community Schools have staff that are, we will have dedicated weekly professional learning time together on Wednesday mornings. That's why that Wednesday is a half-day, not a full day. This is essential for our staff in order to make transitions and experiences between the two programs seamless. The operational hours are bell-to-bell, plus the transitions, before and after school, busing, things like that. Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday, again, Wednesdays are offered as optional half-day enrichments. And the same curriculum, creative curriculum, is used in both of our programs. And we are pleased to say that thanks to the generous voters of this great state of Colorado, we have free breakfast and lunch now in both of our programs. Yay.
All right. The new BVSD preschool learning and enrichment model will offer up to five days a week at 15 locations. So you see that first grouping of schools, those are the learning and enrichment sites. So that is, and you'll see that our, we have an additional 11 locations with learning only for year one. Our long-term goal is to expand more enrichment offerings at those schools as well. Preschool will be offered in 20, 25 of 32 elementary schools. Our district is tripling the numbers of preschool enrichment offerings to ensure families have access to five-day-a-week programming. And Mapleton, as you see, will have four elementary schools that feed into our Only Child Development Center here in the district. Next, you'll see our rollout timeline. As, you know, early childhood and community schools have been working really hard the last year, trying to develop the model, putting recruitment and outreach, supporting our families, our existing families who would roll up into preschool next year, making sure that they're accessing the new state system called Bridge Care. And that's really the phase we're in right now. So that state universal application opened up on January 17th, and it has had a few hiccups, and we're working through those. In fact, the portal shuts down for the first wave tomorrow. We're hearing we'll hear our first set of data the week of February 27th. They originally had hoped we would see the data actually this Friday, but they're a little bit behind. So they've told us that it'll be February 27th, which we're really eager to get a hold of that data. In fact, I was at an early childhood council meeting today, and there are over 1,500 children, four-year-olds, who've enrolled already in the portal. We just don't know what our BVSD data looks like. And then we're really going to spend the whole spring and summer preparing for launch day. Like, there's a lot that has to get done, including, I think we just ordered 900 napping, you know, mats and cots so children can take naps. So it's, it's going to be a busy spring and summer, and we're really excited about it.
All right. So thank you for allowing us the opportunity to present an update on universal preschool. And at this time, we'll take any questions. Beth?
Well, first of all, thank you so much. This is such exciting news. My own kid is not too far from these days. So I, what a, what an amazing gift for so many in our community. Couple questions. This is, you might have mentioned this, and I might have missed it. But it said, "Three-year-olds with a qualifying factor." I just wanted a little understanding around what a qualifying factor is.
A qualifying factor, there's five of them. Income, 270% poverty guideline or lower. Does your child have a disability? So an IEP. Are they a second-language learner? Homelessness and foster care. Those are the five qualifying factors. If you have a three-year-old that does not qualify for those, we have a three-year-old tuition lottery in which you can still access our program through a tuition fee.
Great. Thank you very much. And could you maybe elaborate on just a little bit more about what the enrichment room looks like versus the learning room?
Sure. So the enrichment room is, right now, we have five preschool enrichment. Eisenhower's one location, Heatherwood. So the enrichment room is really modeled around the same curriculum. The, the one difference is that we have director-qualified childcare providers. They're licensed by CDEC versus an ECSE teacher in there. But the day is very similar. We structure the day actually quite similarly, where there's curriculum, there's a lot of learning, there's play, there's nap time, there's outdoor time, there's rest time. And so I, I would say that the instructional component would be really in that learning classroom, the core instructional component, similar to how we had kindergarten and kindergarten enrichment. And then the enrichment component would come through the community schools lens, if that's helpful. Kitty, did you have a question?
Well, that was my question.
Okay. Nicole?
Thank you for that presentation. Renee, you had mentioned transportation. Do, do our preschool participants have access to our busing? And do they ride, if so, do they ride the same buses as our elementary schools and on those routes?
We are only transporting children who have that on their IEP as a related service. And they have their own separate fleet, because we have to put in star seats. So there's kind of special harnesses for young kids.
Thank you. And then another question I have, are preschoolers able to attend school-age care or the after, the after-school programs that our elementary school students have? As a working parent, the longer days were always helpful. So I was curious about that.
I know. So preschoolers can attend SAC when they turn five. So right now, the model is bell-to-bell for enrichment. We certainly can look at that in the future, but we want to make sure that we launch well and we know that we can deliver on a bell-to-bell model for preschool, and then we'll see how it goes.
Thank you.
Richard?
Thank you for the presentation. I see that you have a number of schools where that slide, there you go. You have Alicia Sanchez, all of these particular schools that have both the preschool learning and the enrichment program. And then on one of your slides, you had the enrichment program, tuition-based. And we do have some families that are in these particular schools that are in poverty. And besides CCAP, what other types of assistance do these particular folks have to go into the enrichment program?
Sure. So that will go through community schools, the enrichment programs. And I will say that in Alicia Sanchez and University Hill, we will hire bilingual leads for those programs. So we need staff, if anybody's out there and is bilingual preschool director-qualified, please reach out. But to your point, Richard, we offer CCAP. And then for families who may not qualify for CCAP, we provide a scholarship program, and there's a little form, it's right on the community schools' website, we do it now. Families fill it out, a community liaison can help them. We have a resource specialist now in community schools who's bilingual. She can help the family complete it. We review it internally, and then we do everything from full waiving of all fees to a sliding scale depending on what the family can afford. And we also leave some slots available to make sure that we allow for a mixed financial income group of families in the childcare.
Thank you. And the schools with only a preschool learning program in Year One, why is that? How come they don't have a learning enrichment program?
Finding the highly qualified staff. I think we're just, you know, finding people who are early childhood teacher-qualified, director-qualified, early childhood special education teacher-qualified. So we've had a lot of conversations about trying to create pipelines for hiring staff and getting them trained and ready. And so we felt like we really had the ability to, because we're, the enrichment, we're really tripling the amount of full-day, full-week programming, that we wanted to start that and then have a multi-year rollout.
Another quick question here, since this is just starting now in November, I guess, November, December was kind of like getting the framework and all that done, and then now you're going to, once we get that crazy thing at the state level fixed, what's happening with parents now that have preschoolers or three-year-olds in our system? Do we have some services for them now?
Yeah, so we're still enrolling kids now. So as children turn three on their third birthday and they qualify for special education services, by law, we, you know, are supposed to bring them in on their third birthday. We have kids enrolling every single week in preschool, and I know with you in enrichment as well. So we're really kind of straggled between two years, right? We're enrolling right now, and also, at the same time when they enroll for this year, we're getting them in Bridge Care for next year and prepping for the next year's system. So we're really working in two systems right now.
So the kids that are in preschool right now will have to go through the Bridge System?
They do. So the, and that, and what will happen is families, every year, will have to go through Bridge Care. They get a higher, what we call matching, it's like, it's a nice way to say lottery, but essentially, it's a lottery, but continuity of care ranks the highest. So if they're a returning student, that waits higher. So the goal is to try to get that returning student back. But a family actually has to reapply into Bridge Care every single school year.
Now, I understand that the private world, in terms of early childhood education, has had some concerns with the three-year-olds being served only by the school district. Can you explain if that's true or why that's happening? I know it's, I know it's referenced to special ed probably more than anything else, but...
Yeah. So in House Bill 1295, which is different than CPP, the funding for three-year-olds, so think of three-year-olds as a targeted program, four-year-olds as universal, that will be managed through CDEC. The three-year-olds will flow into the school district. And what's different about this is that in House Bill 1295, they talk about a hold harmless, think of it as a hold harmless pot of funds. So based on BVSD's last November count, we had two-hundred-and-eighty-seven children on that November count. A hundred, at the time, there were a little over a hundred-and-twelve kids who had disabilities. What will happen now is that becomes, we don't have slots anymore like we used to for CPP. So those slots convert to a dollar amount. And for BVSD, that's a little under one-point-six million. So going forward, our students with disabilities are no longer on our November count. So to fund our three-year-olds, three-year-olds with disability, that funding comes from that hold harmless pot of money. So now, as kids come through the whole year, we'll be able to fund those three-year-olds, whereas before, whoever showed up November one, that's who we got the funding for. But we continue to enroll another hundred, hundred-and-fifty students all the way through the end of the school year. So really, that hold harmless three-year-old funding, its number-one priority is funding children with disabilities first. And so that is the concern that school districts have around the state of Colorado. I participated in a conversation with superintendents and CFOs and ECE leaders last week, and many school districts are concerned about that, the money, and how are we truly funding children with disabilities? So many school districts, it's not that they're not wanting to commit to private providers, there's so many unknowns coming through CDEC right now, and there isn't a lot of written guidance, and we really haven't seen how the dollars are all adding up. And so school districts are saying, we're kind of in a hold pattern right now. We're in a wait-and-see. We need to better understand how the dollars are flowing through the school district and making sure that we, because we have a legal obligation to serve children with disabilities, do we have all the dollars that we need? We already know we never had enough funding for children with disabilities. And so now, that's that only pot of funds that we have to serve those three-year-olds. And so that's the discussion that's happening around the state right now.
Sounds like a pretty good mess that we have, don't we?
It's very complicated, for sure.
Let me just ask one other question here, because in 2010, our community passed a Mill Levy override that created full-time preschool for at least seventeen elementary schools here in Boulder. Are we still utilizing that money to cover the cost for our current preschool program that we have? How's that funding going to be working in terms of? We have the Mill Levy override from 2010, and now, we have the State Universal Preschool Program. How does that work? How does that jive?
Yes. So we do get those Mill Levy dollars, which we now call general fund preschool funding that supports, because you know, all the dollars that we did receive through the School Finance Act and tuition, it really was, didn't cover the true costs of what it takes to operate a high-quality preschool, plus all of our community liaisons and support staff we put out in the schools. So we still do get a budget transfer as part of those original Mill Levy dollars, which is now general fund preschool, to help offset the costs of preschool in the district. So we still do receive those.
Thank you. I have a lot more questions, but I'm going to just stop for now.
I know. Our early childhood expert, Richard. It's all good.
Stacy, did you have, okay, Lisa?
I have a few, but I want to maybe pick up where Richard left off with some things. So I'm still trying to understand, if you have a three-year-old who qualifies for this funding stream, is your only option to send them to public schools, or can you also send them through a private school program and have that funded?
At this time, BVSD's position is that they have to come through BVSD at this time, until we have a better understanding of the funding mechanisms to support special education students.
So my concern when looking at that last slide with those schools that only have half-day available, that don't have enrichment, is if we only allow three-year-olds to come to BVSD, and if we only have a half-day program, what are we doing to support parents that need a full day for their three-year-olds so that they can take advantage of this rather than having to pay full tuition at a private school? Do we have some option to bus them to the Y or to a neighboring school or anything like that?
So I'm going to go back to that slide. So the way that we, the way that we built this was in thinking about how the state has looked at preschool now. So we can't dictate where families go, they choose, and they pick five places, and they choose those five places, they don't have to be boundary, they can choose a place that might be twenty miles from where they live because they work in that area. So the way that we chose the schools was really one around, do they have space for preschool, right? And do we have the infrastructure there already? Knowing that families are going to choose where they want to go, not based on their home school, it's not like how kindergarten works or regular, you know, the K-12 system works. It's really a different model for enrollment. So we don't know what parents are going to pick, and we developed this as really a choice system.
I'm sorry, maybe my question wasn't clear. So what I'm looking at with these bottom schools is, say you're a working parent, one of these schools is the one closest to your home, you need to take your three-year-old there, we only have a half-day option, right, at these bottom schools? There is no enrichment, you can only send your kid for three hours. Is that correct?
There's no half-day option at any of the schools. They're full, they're seven-and-a-half-hour days of learning, two days a week, seven-and-a-half hours, and then there's enrichment as well in some schools.
Oh, so the fifteen hours isn't spread out over the five days of three hours each? So a family that's paying for some, I'm sorry, I'm so confused. Can you go back to the slide with the five days a week?
Oops. That one?
So the learning is paying for Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, or something, and then you would be paying for Thursday, Friday as a parent if you wanted them to attend those days too. Is that right? I thought it was that they were paying for mornings or afternoons, and the parents were supplementing the other half.
So, let me, I think I understand your question. Let me see if I can kind of square this way. So for our three-year-olds, and Kim, is it right that some three-year-olds qualify for more than fifteen hours, or do all three-year-olds only qualify for fifteen hours? Only fifteen hours? Okay.
Only the three-year-olds, yeah.
So that's two full days. Right? So if I'm a, so go, so if you were to look at Cohort One, preschool would be Monday, Thursday, which means if you need five-day care, there's Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday that you're dealing with, right? Go back, go to the slide where all the sites are. So if I'm a parent and I'm signing up where, and I know I need that care, then I need to sign up for one of the schools of the top fifteen, right? And so we've tried to space those out in ways where they're close and spread out throughout the community. So it might not be the closest school, but we do have a preschool and enrichment program for folks who are looking for that five-day-a-week care all throughout the community. That's why those fifteen are chosen. It's not perfect. I do believe that if I'm looking at that, there are, there are schools in all of our communities, including Netherland.
That is correct. And then there's also a bilingual school as well. We weren't intentional about that.
That helps a lot. We've been doing the AMPM model before, so I thought that's what we were seeing on that last screen. So we have two full days that you get with this model, and then you can pay for the other two-and-a-half, or you can send them someplace else. So for folks then who only have the schools that have the two days a week, have we done any coordination or outreach with neighboring schools or Y or other childcare programs to see if they have the ability to supplement those two days?
Well, we still don't know who we're getting. So we've set up the programs, we're waiting till, we were supposed to have the list Friday, now it's going to be the twenty-seventh. And so to the extent that we know how we would do that, we would need to be able to engage those parents in those schools to see if that's something that we would need to do. I mean, I think that, you know, the team has been, this has been one of the most incredible challenges that they've had to face, is that we want to scale up, but we don't want to overscale and not be able to fill the hiring slots. And I think that's what's really creating, causing us pause not to grow faster, that we wanted to limit this, you know, certainly expand the number of seats, but get it to a place where we felt like we could fulfill the hiring, because the last thing we'd want to do is make promises we can't keep to our community, opening up slots. So to the extent that we're on those two days a week and parents have some needs, I think, Lisa, that we would be engaging in those conversations. I think that we've got to kind of figure out, A, who's signed up for where, then maybe engage those parents and see what those needs might be. Because potentially, depending upon who's, if somebody signs up for, go to the last slide, somebody slides up for Birch, right, and they say, well, we need five-day care, and we have a slide at Cole, we might say, hey, you need to go over to Cole and you can get the care. So we may be able to settle it that way. I don't know that we're going to need to engage external partners, but I'm not, I wouldn't say that that's not something we'd do. I think our first move would be to try to fix that within the programs that we have.
I appreciate that. And it's clear that there's a lot that still has to be worked out. I just think it would obviously be a real setback if the goals of these programs were frustrated because the working parents with three-year-olds who have these needs couldn't access them simply because we didn't have enough hours to fill out a full-time week, and we didn't have any solutions. Just one more question. So I think right now, the cost of doing, well, let me put that differently, how much will it cost to do the full day for a four-year-old or a three-year-old? You've got two days that are covered, what is the other two-and-a-half days cost next year?
The cost, the tuition cost?
Yeah. If you're doing the enrichment to fill the five days out, what does that look like in terms of cost?
We coordinated our costs, so depending on which program you're in, it would cost the same. So it sounds like it's about fifty-eight-hundred dollars for the year for families, and then families, again, who need CCAP or qualify for CCAP, get that. And then if there's a scholarship need, we look at that as well.
That's fifty-eight-hundred over nine months?
Correct.
And right now, it's like five-hundred dollars a month, is that right?
Correct. Somewhere, it's a little bit more, it's five-fifteen now.
It's five-fifteen?
Six-twenty-one.
So an increase but not, sorry, I'm just trying to do that in my head quickly, an increase but not substantially more than we would expect for an annual year inflation?
It is not, and it does not cover our costs in community schools. So it's not, we're not giving the, we're not charging the family really what it costs. Right now, community schools is absorbing it.
I know, and I appreciate your program. As you know, my kid went through preschool, and one of my favorite things about that for folks that are considering it was the ease of transition into kindergarten. I just heard some things, I think there's often a lot of panic from folks around the community before details are clear, that there was a tuition increase, so I just wanted to get some clarity, and it sounds like it's just a standard years increase roughly.
Yeah. And we held, I will say for community schools, we received a very large childcare grant, which ends June thirtieth. And so we held raising tuition through the pandemic, so now we do have to raise tuition. So it might seem like, oh, my gosh, to a family, but it's, you know, pretty standard for inflation and given the change in the care model.
Well, I appreciate that. I know there's just, I think, nothing more stressful as a parent than preschool. Everything about preschool is stressful, everything about scheduling preschool is stressful, so I appreciate you answering all of my questions about trying to understand how this works, and I hope if we have folks listening, that adds some clarity, and I hope we can maybe, Rob, revisit some of these questions around that bottom group of schools and what that looks like when we get a little closer to the beginning of next year.
No, I think that that would be a good opportunity for our community and for the board.
So what's missing from your presentation is the role of the LCO, because I think people think that it's us making these decisions, and it's not. So if you could talk about what the local coordinating organization is, because these are not BVSD decisions. We are not deciding where kids go to school, we are not deciding how they apply, we are not deciding the deadlines, we're not deciding the funding, we're not deciding anything that we used to decide. So can you talk a little about the LCO so people understand where the responsibility is and what we're trying to do to coordinate?
Yeah, so truly, BVSD is a provider. We, so in House Bill 1295, they have something called the LCO, Local Coordinating Organization. And for our district community, even though we're in Broomfield and Boulder, the Early Childhood Council of Boulder County is our LCO. So they are responsible for managing the whole Bridge Care system and supporting families. Now, we here in BVSD, our community liaisons and our staff are helping families access it, but the whole backend, the matching, locating families to a location, that happens all at the Early Childhood Council of Boulder County. It does not happen through BVSD. So this is really the first time that we, you know, we would have started enrollment in November. And so this is the first time that, I can't even see who has applied. So that's kind of a, it's just different. It's blinding, not knowing where our kids are at, just, you know, we're working with every returning family, encouraging them to get into Bridge Care, and sitting down with them and helping them apply. But until that data comes to us from the council, we don't have any information or decision-making around that.
And isn't it true that they just released a certain number of slots, so we don't even know how many slots we're going to get, and then they're going to release more slots? And so it's, and you get to help them reapply since the whole system didn't work the first time? I mean, I can't imagine what your day-to-day lives are like right now.
There are lots of phone calls about it and very confusing, yes. So CDEC opened thirty-two thousand around the state of Colorado seats in Bridge Care. As of yesterday, there were twenty-six thousand of those filled already. So as you can imagine, school districts are like, okay, wait a minute, is thirty-two thousand like ninety-five percent saturation rate? And they're like, no, that's kind of like their just initial offering. They're not really telling us how many total seats they could open and what that dollar amount is. And I think that's a... seats they could open, and what that dollar amount is. And I think that's a nervousness that the school districts have, especially now that we know the four-year-olds, especially four-year-olds with disabilities flow through that Colorado Universal Preschool funding. So we know that they, the governor has set aside $329 million for Universal Preschool. We don't know how many total slots in the state that will serve. We just know they have opened up 32,000 slots in Wave One. So after this first wave gets going, and we get the information, we have 30 days to respond to a family and register them, and then another wave opens. And what will happen is every two weeks, waves will open, close, match, open, close, match. And so that's what is going to be happening between our local coordinating organization and CDEC, and then that data and information will come to us, and our team will work and comb through it and get kids registered. And that will happen all the way through August 1. After August 1, it, the match happens daily. It's a real-time, everyday match.
And to Lisa's question, we don't, if a parent says they want Birch, it's the LCO's decision, because you have to list the schools you want. So you can say, I want Birch, but it's the LCO gets to decide where you go.
Yep. We built our seats. So we built 20 preschool seats in each of our classrooms. And so they will go through, and they've got this matching criteria, and families will pick five locations. They do the match, and then it'll, you know, once the child gets matched, if Zachary Bluman's matched a Birch, then he, he will come through as a dataset, Zachary Bluman Birch, you know, and that will happen with every student. And then we will work through and accept them and, and register them.
But that could be that you actually wanted Zachary to go to Fireside.
Right. And I may not have gotten my first match, because it was filled. So I got my second one, or my third one, or my fourth one. Yeah. So that's going to be different for families.
So Richard has a question, and I have a few more.
So the real guarantee that we have is for three-year-olds. Because for preschool, we don't even know if the founder are going to pick us.
That is correct.
But we know that we're going to get the three-year-olds.
And for three-year-olds, they're not matching them to a location. They're matching them so when a family goes in, they put their child's date of birth, and the system recognizes they're a three-year-old. It then doesn't ask you to select a location, it tells you to select a school district. So you would select Boulder Valley School District, and then we will get all those families, the children's names in a bucket, and then we will call them and say, what are your top five choices? And then we will work through the matching process. So it's, it's, there's multiple processes going on, and it is confusing for families. And I think the strength we have here in Boulder Valley School District is we have 17 community liaisons who are literally walking our families through this, and they are the lifeline to our families, helping them through this Bridge Care system.
God bless them. CCAP does not cover the, the full tuition for the enrichment program, does it?
CCAP is based on the family's income. So it's, and again, it's set by the state, it's set by the different counties. We have, we're providers in five different counties, so depending on where family lives, we take CCAP. But it's really based on the family's income, and we don't have a say in that.
But you do have sort of like an average in terms of how much CCAP is providing support to the enrichment program?
Correct. And it, it doesn't fully fund a seat, I will say that.
Another fun fact, CDE and CDEC didn't even have an MOU until a week ago.
Oh, my goodness.
True? It's okay, you don't need to answer that.
Yes, that is a true statement.
Can you talk about sped? We treat, we will, BVSD will have all of the children who qualify for sped, but the issue is, you don't even really necessarily call it an IEP for the young kids. They may not know they have one. But we, so a parent with a kid who has an IEP doesn't really get to choose, because they have to come to a BVSD school. Is that, am I understanding that for the most part correctly?
Yeah, when you're four, yes, you choose, you come to BVSD, but then you need, you can pick your top five BVSD locate, so it's BVSD locations that you're picking, yeah. And if families, for some reason, don't, all those five locations are filled, because it'll get trickier as time goes on, right? Because the seats will start getting filled. As we work through the Child Fine process, we'll actually let families know, this is where you live, these are the areas that we have open seats. So we're going to have to really help families through the Child Fine process, and help them go through Bridge Care so they can find a seat for their child.
And we're trying to hold seats, but we don't know how many seats to hold, and we don't know if they'll even fund us for holding seats for sped. True?
Correct. We know we probably will see about 330 students with disabilities, based on our trend data, yeah.
The staffing ratios, didn't the state change the staffing ratios? Are we following the state recommendation for staffing ratios? Are we, what does that look like?
Yes. Colorado preschool program was 16 children to a group size. That moved to 20, and so we are moving to the 20 as well.
And as you indicated, these are good CTE opportunities, right, to, to train some of our up-and-coming students?
Yes. We, it's a great opportunity. We have Early Connections, the Infant and Toddler Center up there. We, we welcome everybody and anyone, come and train and be a, be a director-qualified or ECT-qualified childcare provider. And we will work with families, or we will work with potential staff, we'll help them get their certification. We have a pretty robust system in community schools, because we rely on training people up in order to staff it. So we will take folks, train them. We already have all the jobs posted right now online, and we're willing to hire people now, put them into existing programs to give them the training hours that they need, so that they'll be ready for us in August. So please apply.
That is awesome. And I just want to say, I saw a term that you used that I love, which is wraparound enrichment. I like that. It was on your slide. I thought it was great as a way to think about how we are trying to help our three- and four-year-olds wraparound enrichment. Kitty?
So I'm confused about what Bridge Care is.
Happy to take that one. So the governor's office, or CDEC, program created what, Bridge Care is a software program, that it is the universal application system for any family to access free preschool. They have to go through the Bridge Care system, apply for their child, and answer a bunch of qualifying questions, and pick their locations. And so all of that gets put in there. The family then locks it down, they do, there's like a process where it's like, I accept all the, you know, all this information's correct. They lock it down, it sends the information to the local coordinating organization, which is the Early Childhood Council here in Boulder County. They process that and work with the CDEC office on the matching, and then release that data to us. So it's a state system.
Okay. That clears up a lot, because I thought it was actually some kind of care.
Oh, I know. That sounds kind of confusing.
I was trying to figure out how that fits in there. And you said that families will have to apply again, right?
Each year.
And so they could not end up in the same spot they were last year?
It is a possibility, right. I can't give a guarantee, because I don't oversee that matching process. But the good news is continuity of care if they are returning. So it's like continuity of care, sibling in the child, or then the sibling in the school. IEP, district bound, school boundary, district boundary, and are you an employee of the school? It's literally in that matching ranking order. So the goal is to get your returning students back, because that would be very stressful for a child and a family.
Thank you.
But Kitty, it's important to know that we only fund four-year-olds. So if you have a five-year-old who's going to continue on in preschool, there's no funding from the state.
So you mean, instead of going to kindergarten?
Well, some kids, depending on where their birthdays are, and, you know, whether you want, a kid needs it a little bit longer in preschool, the only funding is for four-year-olds, and there's strict birth dates that, that apply to when you get that funding.
So then would they be able to stay in and pay full tuition, or do they have to leave?
They don't have to leave, but there's no funding.
So at this time, it's only school age three and four. And since my department also does the kindergarten piece, we have incredibly high-quality developmentally appropriate kindergartens. And so we really feel like, when you're school age five, we're ready for you in kindergarten. So we really would like, we support you in transitioning to kindergarten. But at this time, it's only school age three and four.
Is there any way to capture how much this is going to cost us at the end of the day, over and above the funding? I'm looking at Bill.
I think that's.
I just think, because we know it's, we know we're going to be having to support this a lot in a declining enrollment district, and declining budgets, and it's super important that we do it, and our community thinks that we're paying for a full-day preschool. There's a lot of misunderstanding, in part because of how the governor talks about it. So I would love to figure out how we can at least get a ballpark for what this is costing us, Rob, in, you know, the beginning of the year. Because you guys have stood up a lot of work, and a lot of staff, and a lot of time, and a lot of money. So thank you, but I just think we need to understand what that's doing to our budget.
You know, I think that once this is all flushed out, and we know and understand how much money we're getting, we'll know and understand how much general fund dollars we're pushing towards that, right? And that would be part of the budget, that'd be in the budget book, right? The transfer over, yeah.
Yeah, I think that'll be really helpful, especially the sped costs and the overall costs. And, you know, to stand this up in 15 schools, you guys are doing amazing work. So thank you so much. Board members, any other questions? Thank you. Awesome.
Thank you.
So, Rob, I think the next thing is our legislative update. Do you want to, do you have anything you want to talk about on that?
Sure. Well, legislative session is heating up. I think there's a few bills that have already dropped, a couple that will be dropping that, that are aligned to our legislative priorities. Of note, we have special education funding, Senate Bill 2399, which is projecting, is suggesting that there's an additional $40 million that would, would go to special education funding throughout the state. And that is moved to, that's already gone from the Senate Committee to the Appropriations Committee, if I'm, if I'm reading that correctly. And so that's good. We have a bill that's dropped, 23-029, Disproportionate Discipline in Public Schools, which is an interesting bill from Senator Moreno and Representative Lindsay, which really tasks school districts to have a plan around managing disproportionate discipline, and being public in reporting out that information. And so that's, there hasn't been any action on that. It was introduced on the, in the Senate, and assigned, assigned to the Senate Education Committee. I'm not sure where that is. There's the Education Accountability Act, 23-071, which is sponsored by Senator Danielson and Representative Garcia. And this is a bill that is attempting to allow a school district to seek judicial review if they have an issue with an action from the State Board of Education. And then the last bill that has not yet dropped, but I know is in process, is a bill that, that the case has been involved with, members of DASC have been involved in, which is this, is to develop a task force to review the accountability audit. That was the result of legislation two years ago. And so I'm looking forward to that, coming forward to know and understand where, where that bill lands, and what, what are we going to do as a state around this audit that our elected officials, our legislators deemed important to do? And now that we have the information, how are we going to dig into that to improve accountability and accreditation systems for the state of Colorado? And board members, I've stopped, I've been able to speak on this pretty strongly around my opinions, the opinions of our other fellow superintendents in DASC, that, that we should be digging into this, the results that we, that we should be trying to do better as, as a state for our kids around accountability systems and accreditation systems. And I've already spoken at length on those, so I won't rehash those issues. But that's some of the stuff that, that's, that's happening down at the Capitol.
Can I ask you to rehash it for a second? Can you see, as, as I think we've talked about publicly, the idea of a two-year task force, when we already know the system's broken, and we've been working on it for years, I'd really like to see us push back on that two years. And not accept that it's a done deal, because I just think the fact that, the timing concerns us. But we're still going to let our students and our school districts and our systems be subject to a system that we know is broken, because we can't work fast enough, just seems appalling to me.
I think the big, the big challenge is that you have some folks that, that, that represent education interests in the state of Colorado that are pushing to maintain the status quo in our current system. I think that's a major concern. The, while the bill hasn't dropped, you know, the timeframe, I think, is crucial. I think the time to act is now, sooner is better than later. You know, I worry, you know, if you think something's broken, and you have an audit, and that audit gives you information that there's opportunities to improve, you know, how long do you need to study something before you do something? And I think that that's the tension that we're feeling. But there are entities that represent education throughout the state that don't think we should be doing anything. And I think that that will be the debate, as this bill, and I do expect this bill to get support and to go through, but the debate will be, do you, is what we're doing the right thing, or could we do something better? And, you know, my hope is that we can be involved in that, I can be involved in that, that Boulder Valley takes a seat at the table. I think that, that we are a model for school districts around the state to look to. We've set a bar higher for ourselves than the state ever could. We'd hold ourselves more accountable than the state ever could. And we have a system, and the current system, that masks our issues, that we hold out in plain sight around achievement gaps, opportunity gaps. We've developed a strategy to address those issues, because they're wrong, and we can do better, and we are doing better. But if, but if we didn't do that, if we didn't determine that, we could just look at the, you know, our accreditation rating, and, and do victory laps around Boulder County, because we're the number-one rated district in the Denver metro. But some kids aren't learning, and they're not growing, and they're not getting the opportunities, and that's not right. So I think that the challenge for this, for superintendents, is that many are in a position where if they advocate for something different, they're accused of trying to ease up the system so they won't do poorly. Right? When I think of some of, of our, of our neighboring districts who have lots of students in poverty, lots of students where English is a second language. And, and we know that the system we have today aligns almost all of the school districts that, that the state would consider a turnaround, have a majority of students in poverty. So I think we can do better, we should do better. You know, how long that takes, you know, how fast, you know, how, you know, what do we need to do there? I do think, Kathy, that as the bill drops, you know, and we have opportunities to testify and share information, that would be the time to be able to try to make changes, and just be really clear that, that we can do better. And, and a better accreditation and accountability system will help kids, it will shift the focus of systems, it will focus on the right issues, and allow us to do a better job preparing kids for their future.
I think you just did your testimony. Thank you, Rob, for your leadership on this, and for the work you've done locally, because I agree with you that we're really trying to figure out how to hold ourselves accountable in the right ways and for the right reasons. Anything else? I just have a couple of quick things on. So we had JBC figure setting, but what people need to understand about the JBC is they have to do figure setting according to current law, they can't change the law. But the state share came in for property taxes pretty high. And I thought, I asked Bill, and I'm sure they'll have some sleight of hand for this, that when we raised our mill levy, that there was an agreement that the increase that was coming in for the mill levy was going to go to schools, and they're already talking about decreasing the state share. So, and it's a lot of money. It was like 160 million almost dollars that were coming in over what predictions were because of our, as we all know, our increase in property taxes. So stay tuned, because it'll be really interesting to see what happens. They can't, they say they can't do anything till the March revenue forecast, so I'm sure we'll be hearing from, from Bill when we get the revenue forecast, and we get a little more clarification around school finance. And they must have said 100 times, there's so much money that we need to redo the School Finance Act. But I haven't seen much around that, that makes me really anxious. And then there was this really weird description of evidence-based changes that somehow, through the back door, said that because local districts make their own decisions about how, I asked Bill if he understood this, because local districts make It's in the staff document that you got from Policy Matters, page eight, if anybody wants to go read it. I printed it and then left it on my printer. And then the other bill that I think's worth watching, but the governor's held it up, is Representative Kip and Senator Zenzinger's bill to refer a measure to use the surplus for staffing increases. And because there's some great fix coming, what, depending on who you talk to, that bill's been on hold, but I think it'll be interesting to see if that actually gets out and gets referred, so. So I think the interesting days are to come when we start seeing the actual pen to paper on finance. Board members, any other bills of interest? Okay. I know we're trying to get out of here on Valentine's Day, but can we just take a five-minute break and we'll hold ourselves to five minutes, is that all right, board members, and then we'll get through the rest? Calling the meeting back to order, the next item on our agenda is action items and consent grouping, including 7.1 personnel items, 7.2 approval of minutes, January 23, 2023, approval of minutes, January 24, 2023, special meeting, 7.4 approval of minutes, January 24, 2023, regular meeting, 7.5 acceptance of donation, Monarch PK8, 7.6 approval of contract, University of Colorado RISE, 7.7 CTE consultant contract for bond-funded CTE master planning, 7.8 grant assistant superintendent for schools, high-impact tutoring, Colorado Department of Education, 7.9 grant student services, RISE SEL Kaiser Permanente. Are there any items that board members would like to pull from the consent grouping? I have a motion, moved by Nicole, seconded by Kitty, is there any conversation, discussion? Rob, I was hoping you could talk about the Kaiser and the RISE grant, because it's pretty exciting. Just briefly.
Yep, sure, I'm just pulling up the information here. I believe this, so, RISE, we were just having this conversation, so, if you are a BVSD parent, we have like seven, or not seven, three actual programs that have this acronym. So, this RISE, this RISE we're talking about is resilience in schools and educators, it's a whole-school social-emotional learning program, it makes for trauma-responsive school climates to promote resilience in staff and students. We had, this is, we established this with the Kaiser grant in two high schools four years ago, and we've been progressively expanding. Kaiser reached out and invited us to apply for this additional grant to expand the program to staff across the district and continue, through a cohort of parents, establishing resource hub, district resource hub, and really continuing to expand this program.
I remember when this program was at Fairview and it was really successful, so I was just excited to see them ask us to expand and to see us get additional resources on an issue that I know is really important. So, will we get a report back on that maybe next year for how it's doing and the impact that it's had?
Yeah, we can discuss kind of where things are, I'm, you know, yeah, maybe we should add that to, Laura, add that to our prioritization, and a mental health SEL update, including RISE grants, and then we can consider that our next prioritization meeting.
All right, anything else? Laura, can you call the roll on consent, please? Garcia?
Yes.
Gebhardt?
Yes.
Niznick?
Yes.
Raj Paul?
Yes.
Sargent?
Yes.
Sweeney Moran?
Yes.
Ziss?
Yes.
Motion passes. We're moving now to the policy action items. We have one policy on which we're taking action this evening, policy, board policy adoption, policy BDFE, Community Bond Oversight Committee. Kathleen, can you present, please?
Yes, thank you, President Gebhardt. The board reviewed this item at the last meeting and had only minor revisions that were requested before it was brought back for action. Specifically, we did add within the charge of this committee that they would address other such questions as the board may refer, and as always, board member Sargent gave me some fabulously detailed edits that were also incorporated. So, this is back for the board's adoption.
Board members, any questions or comments? Is there a motion? Moved by Nicole, seconded by Kitty. Again, any conversation? Laura, can you call the roll, please? Garcia?
Yes.
Gebhardt?
Yes.
Niznick?
Yes.
Raj Paul?
Yes.
Sargent?
Yes.
Sweeney Moran?
Yes.
Ziss?
Yes.
Motion passes. Rob, can you remind me when we'll see the applications and the people who are gonna apply and be part of this committee? It's in April, right?
I believe so, I believe that's, yeah, that's when it's coming back, it's in April.
All right, next we have policy study items, we have one policy to study this evening, board policy JLCDB and JLCDBE, administration of medical marijuana to qualified students. Again, we'll turn it over to you, Kathleen.
Yes, thank you. The board may recall that several years ago, the state of Colorado had a bill that moved through the legislature and was enacted, that made it permissive for school districts to establish policies by which parents or primary caregivers could administer to their children at school medical marijuana, subject to very specific restrictions. The board will remember that in the state of Colorado, for a child to have a medical marijuana recommendation, that they are required to see two different medical providers, and there are a series of additional protections that exist within the constitutional amendment itself. In 2021, the legislature came back, they determined that they felt that school districts were being too conservative and too cautious in this area, and they removed the discretionary aspect. They required that school districts adopt a policy, and that that policy, within certain constraints in terms of location and some of the logistics and details that we can determine, that school districts adopt a policy that permits a primary caregiver or a volunteer at school to administer the child's medical marijuana while they are in school. As the board knows, we do have a policy review scheduled, this item was not originally identified to move this quickly. We had a specific request from our Health Services Department. We do have at least one student who's significantly impacted, and the family has been advocating and waiting for this policy to be adopted. Recognizing the importance of that issue, we have moved forward today to present the board with the policy as recommended by our Health Services team. So, the policy reflects the requirements of the law, and then Exhibit E is that detailed logistics plan that would be developed to implement the policy. We are leaders in so many things, we are not the first on this item. You will see that Cherry Creek Schools, Aurora, Thompson, among others, all have these policies in place. So, this policy is now presented to the board tonight for study.
Thank you. Board members, questions? Stacy?
Kathleen, since we aren't first, I'm assuming that you looked at those policies and the application here, that's the exhibit, so that we didn't reinvent the wheel? Is that safe to assume?
That is entirely safe to assume. You will see that the elements are taken from our neighboring districts. In particularly, we do work closely with Cherry Creek. They have a lot of students who are impacted due to where they are. So, we modeled ours primarily after Cherry Creek and Aurora.
Nicole, you said you had questions?
The use of the word volunteer in this document, can you talk through the why behind that, because I think there are gonna be a lot of questions about that? And then, you know, what, in the situations where there is not anybody at school that volunteers and a parent cannot take time out of their day for a heavily impacted student, what, kind of walk through those two things for me?
Well, the first one I can, and the second one we'll see. So, the first question you had is, under the law, what does it mean to have a volunteer? So, I think there are several protections that are specifically in the law that you will see included in the policy. So, there's no ability through this law or through the proposed policy for a family to compel any individual school district employee to agree to administer this particular medication while a child is at school. There are also protections in place, in case somebody does volunteer who is a school district employee, protecting them from any sort of disciplinary action for following through in accordance with the policy. I think it remains to be seen how it will be actually implemented. I know that when this bill was going through the legislature, there was some concern that, for example, compelling nurses to administer medication could be problematic due to their licensure. So, there have been many considerations around that. As we look at the first student who will actually apply, it's by understanding that there are individuals within that student's treatment team already who may be willing to step into this role, depending on the specifics of the policy that the board adopts.
And the volunteering absolves the district from some level of responsibility and puts that directly on the person that's volunteering to administer that medication, is that what I'm understanding in this policy?
The plan really keeps that responsibility with the parent. This is a really tricky area, which is, I think, why school districts have been slow to adopt. Medical marijuana is unlike other medications that we may administer, where a pill is clearly a pill, and there is some, there's really a need to have a very specific protocol that is followed for the student. There is not, at this point, has not been any concern raised that that liability would rest with the individual. We really have, as much as we can with the policy, tried to make this. This is an implementation of the law, and we will be working with parents to implement it.
Thank you.
Kitty?
Yeah, I have a, I guess it's just one question. In the policy, it's really clear that nobody can pressure anybody else to be a volunteer, including parents, and so I'm hoping that if we have parents who would like to, you know, have medical marijuana administered to their students, that we would give them a copy of the policy, so they know what they're not allowed to do. And on the exhibit, on the part that's completed by the parent, it has name of volunteer school personnel, and what if they don't, you know, one, they can't ask anybody, so I'm just curious how they could fill that out if there wasn't anybody yet or ever.
So, the idea of the exhibit and the plan is that this is a document, much like a healthcare plan, or an individualized education plan, or a 504 plan, that would be developed in partnership with the parent, the school leader, and then the other individuals on the student's team who really are familiar with the student's needs, so, our director of health services. My understanding, the reality is, that a student who is likely to need medical marijuana is a student who is well-known to our health services team, this is usually a student who we've been working collaboratively to support their medical needs. So, there's already a lot of relationship there typically, and as we know, building relationships is the best way to solve problems. So, that would really be our focus. I think I would say, as an attorney, that if we let our inability to answer every hypothetical stop us from taking action, we do a lot of sitting and waiting, so I definitely agree that these are serious concerns that we're going to need to support our staff and families through in the implementation, but because we haven't had any students in our community and the numbers of students in the state are so small, we really haven't navigated all of those issues quite yet.
Yeah, and I think you're absolutely right, that the kids will already have a team who, you know, who know them very well. But, I mean, can you, can the district or the parent even ask, would somebody like to volunteer? And then where does it turn, go from asking to pressuring?
Right, yes, as you know, I have a child in high school myself, and I often think that any conversation, I'm applying pressure to our school people. So, I think it will be a delicate one to navigate. Frankly, a lot of times, we'll have that conversation internally first, and then we're able to share information with the family, and we aren't putting them in a position where they're trying to go and find somebody. We're facilitating some careful, sensitive conversations, and then sharing that information. Thank you.
Any other questions, board members? Have you heard from Cherry Creek? Are they having any unexpected problems?
Of all the issues that are really dominating school district and lawyer time specifically right now, this one isn't even a blip on the radar.
Thanks for bringing it forward. Any other questions? All right, so you'll bring that back, I'm guessing there's some urgency to this, since we have a family waiting, so can we bring it back at the next board meeting?
Yes, thank you very much.
Are we all right with that, board members? All right, future agenda requests, are there items that board members would like to raise for a future board meeting, remembering that we have a prioritization, another continuation of our prioritization meeting coming up in mid-March-ish? Board members, anything? Lisa?
So, at that prioritization meeting, can we discuss some of these conversations we've been hearing about around advisory in high schools, and just understand a little bit more about whether there could be a time to have a study session on how that looks?
We can add that to the list to talk about?
So, my understanding, board members, is the March conversation is around creating some rules to the road, around advocacy resolutions, some of that, and is not to revisit other topics for prioritization, that that would then come to our next prioritization meeting prior to the fall semester.
I don't feel rushed on it, I just want to tag adding that to the list for the next time we do have these conversations.
We could totally do that.
And maybe it would even be a good RFI to try to figure out what the budget implications and things are to help frame it.
Actually, we can have discussions on that, and I think it's a tough RFI, because to the extent that what Ross has brought forward and his idea and thoughts, there's different flavors and versions of what advisory could be, so, but if there's an RFI, we'll consider it.
All right, board members, anything else? Richard?
Yeah, just very quickly, the March meeting, what day is that, March meeting?
I believe the 14th? I'm looking at Laura.
Well, the reason I'm asking the question is, in the meantime, because I know that Senate Bill 071, pardon?
March 13.
Okay. The sponsor of the bill and the people that are helping, that helped write the bill are asking for some resolutions from school boards to be able to support that particular bill, and I'm not sure whether March is going to be late for them or not, but what can we do in the meantime if we want to bring a resolution to the table?
I'll turn to Rob and Kathleen for that, because we don't have a process, that's part of what we're gonna try to figure out at March.
So, we don't have a process to, that we've all agreed upon around resolutions and what are the rules to the roads when we individually support or take action, and I think that was the idea around the March meeting. I do think that we'll be closely keeping an eye on that bill, understanding, you know, what's happening, certainly we'll engage with our lobbyists, I've already done that, to keep an eye on that, and to see where things go. We do have a board meeting on the 28th, and so we'll have an opportunity at that point in time to see what progress has been made with the bill, is it getting the traction, and where, what the district, within the realm of
Certainly we'll engage with our lobbyists, I've already done that, to keep an eye on that and to see where things go. We do have a board meeting on the 28th, and so we'll have an opportunity at that point in time to see what progress has been made with the bill, is it getting the traction and where, what the district, within the realm of the legislative priorities, you know, how can we continue to support?
Thanks, I think that's good to know. Just FYI, Casby already supports that particular bill.
No, they didn't, Richard. I was at the meeting, they did not.
Oh, really?
They took an amend. That's what I wanted to talk to Representative Garcia about. It's, so we can have that conversation later, but no, they didn't support it.
And, I mean, I just want to add, because we've also been contacted by Representative Joseph about her bill, and we've been contacted by Senator Marchman about her bill, I think it's a good time to get an understanding of, you know, rules the road before we choose one to form an opinion on and pass a resolution over the others, because we haven't had a chance to talk about any of those yet either.
And in the past, when there was a bill that had significant impact on the district, we've had special board meetings, and we can think about that if that becomes necessary as we go forward. But I don't, we haven't had to address that or drive over that bridge yet.
We'll keep a close eye, again, right? This is why we set legislative priorities, and so we're able to act and interject and engage, aligned to how the priorities that the board considered and voted upon, and so we'll stay within those parameters. And if there is a need to go beyond that, I'll communicate directly with the board and won't move forward without board action.
All right, board members, anything else? Do we have a motion to adjourn? Happy Valentine's Day.
So moved.
Bye, Kitty. All right, we're adjourned until the, till next week, we have a work session next week. All right. Thank you.